San Juan County Commission. Welcome, everyone. Judge, thank you for coming. And go ahead and. We have a call, I believe, Mr. Maryboy is on line.
Is he?
Is he still there? So we do have.
I'm here.
All three commissioners are here. Invocations. Anyone? Mr. Adams.
Dear Father in heaven, as we come before the county commission meeting this day, we're grateful for those who are in attendance and concerned about issues in the county. We're grateful for the jobs that we have. We ask you to bless us. It will be judicious in the things that we do as county commissioners. Father in him, we ask you to bless our state leadership, our governor, and those who are working with him. We ask you to bless the President of the United States and Congress, that they'll make good decisions for the people of the United States. We are mindful of the people in Ukraine and the situation there. We ask you to bless and protect those people from harm. And please help to end this conflict. We pray for a miracle in that regard. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this citizenship we have and the freedoms that we enjoy. And these things we say in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Going ahead with the proposed agenda is agenda, Mr. Vidal.
All right, so for today, we have the oath of office for Brittany Ivans. We'll take care of that first. After that, we'll go into public comments. But for today, on our consent agenda items, we have the approval of the commission meeting minutes for May 3rd through May 5th, 2022. You have the approval of the check registers for May 1st through May 13th. Approval of a contract with Peggy Scott, the Navajo language translator for election materials, radio ads, and staff trainings for this year's election. You have approval of $36,274.58 in small purchases. You have $10,926,096 for firefighter gear for the fire department. You have $5,109.15 for dementia education materials for aging and adult services. You have $13,011.53 for caregiver kit supplies for aging and adult services. You have $2,523.94 for first aid and CPR supplies with the Public Health Department. And then $4,702.74 for new laptops for aging and adult services. Item number six on your agenda, let me scroll down through there, is ratification of an engagement contract with Dentons, Durham, Jones, and Penner for legal representation for the clerk, auditor, and county administrator. Item number seven is ratification of agreement with Snow, Christensen, and Martineau for legal representation for Commissioner Gray as Commissioner Maryboy. Under recognitions, presentations, and informational items, you have an update on the 2022 wildfire fire risk or wild land fire risk with the U.S. Forest Service, BLM, and forestry fire and state lands. Item number nine, presentation of Senate Bill 179 and discussion regarding the creation of the County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council as required prior to January 1st, 2023. Business, under the business action items, you have consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Utah Division of Water Rights for the Utah Stream Gauges to collect and publish flow data on Pat Creek above Spanish Valley. I'll present that item. Item number 11, consideration and approval of transfer of FAA entitlements to the Hanksville, Utah airport. Again, I'll present, it looks like I'm presenting most of these. Item number 12, consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding between San Juan County and the State of Utah, Navajo Nation, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, and the City of Blanning for the Westwater Project. Item 13, consideration and approval of the San Juan Counseling Fiscal Year 23 Area Plan. That'll be presented by Aaron Duke, our clinical director. Then, under the next item on the agenda there would be commission reports and then your journal. Is your agenda for today?
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Maryboy to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion to approve the agenda as presented by our county administrator.
Any question, comments? Add-ons, deletion? No comments? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye also. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Three in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. You can go ahead and proceed with the oath of office. Judge.
The Sivens. I'm going to read it. All you need to do is state your name and affirm.
Ryan. You guys might want to stand closer to that mic so it's part of.
Turn it around. Do you, state your name.
Brittany Ivans.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of San Juan County Attorney, you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that you will discharge the duties of your office with fidelity, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a pen. Do you have a pen? Right there, your signature.
I got a picture for you, Jordan.
Your signature right there. And I'll sign one.
You know, everything about Brittany is unusual. She's a blonde.
Thank you, appreciate that, Judge. Absolutely, thank you.
She's intelligent. And she's left-handed.
Yeah.
Continuing with the public comment period.
Okay. Public comments we will take for any item on the agenda or anything that you'd like to mention or discuss with the commissioners. We will allow for public comments to be for three minutes per person on here. Keep your comments nice and courteous and kind on there. Try to avoid any clapping or grandstanding if possible. We do have a sign up sheet here in the chambers here if you're wishing to make a public comment. I'll start with those first and then just go kind of in order. When you do come up and to the podium, just please state your name and where you live within the county, and then we'll take it from there.
Hello?
Hello.
Okay.
We're just grabbing the list. Once we finish up here in the chambers, then we'll go to any of those individuals online wishing to make a public comment. So the first one I have on my list is Terry Gardner. Okay, all right. And Ryan, same with you, right? Okay, these two are presenting. And so, let's see, Greg Colbreath?
I'd like to save mine until after Stewart is finished with his.
Oh, do you want, so I can switch it up, Stewart? You want to go first?
My name is Stuart Smith. I live in Elk Meadows. Commissioners, I'm here to ask for a progress report on the decision you made in January to repeal and rewrite the 2019 amendment that would allow for subdivision of under one acre in San Juan County. As myself and others have pointed out, this amendment is in direct opposition to the master plan previously approved and adopted by the county. Five months ago, I stood before you arguing that the 2019 amendment was not in line with the master plan, and you gentlemen agreed. On Thursday, May 12th, the ranches of Elk Meadows presented a revised subdivision plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission, asking for subdivision to one acre. The plan also included language that would indicate to anyone interested in buying one of the lots that the roads would eventually be included in the county road system. In that P and Z meeting, an entirely different issue arose, and your county roads director used the ranches of Elk Meadows' own proposal to make an example of roads that do not conform and would never be accepted into the county system. Discussion among the P and Z board members leaned in favor of some sort of meeting between road department reps, health department reps, and these subdividers and surveyors should take place to set some guidelines. At that meeting, I asked P and Z Chair Trent Schaefer what the status of redoing the 2019 amendment was, and he said he did not know. Unless you gentlemen get busy on revising these 2019 amendments, we seem to have no framework to guide these surveyors and developers. I'd like to see the commission get behind the idea of keeping rural lands rural. Subdivision of no less than five acres in rural San Juan County is what I'm asking for. I'm also asking that you make revision to the 2019 amendment a top priority. Please deal with this amendment and define our county's character so that projects such as the ranches of Elk Meadows will understand and conform to it. Thank you.
I just have one question of Stuart, if that's all right.
Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
So your proposal, if a subdivision in the rural part of the county, you're saying it should have five acres?
I would favor five acres, and I would also want our health department to weigh in on this. When I built on my lot, I am on 10 acres, it was kind of an after the fact deal. Am I going to be able to put in my septic? Is this, and I don't know all these rules. I mean, I'm ready to, and I'm encouraging my fellow Elk Meadows residents to get a war chest together, and we can get an attorney to kind of spell out what these, how this is supposed to be handled. Because we're in the dark on this. We're, I mean, we're at your mercy to make good decisions, but the decisions that are coming in front of the P and Z are insane. I mean, the first one was third acre, and there is no way you're going to be able to get a percolation test that's going to allow for, I don't know how many people are in your family, but I know, we have a small, my wife and I are the only ones on that septic system, and we qualified, but we were one of the very few out there that had enough dirt to get a standard septic system in. So this may be something that you want to add to the planning and zoning or to the subdivision ordinances. In order for you to subdivide to a certain level, you have to be able to provide waste, water, you know, benefits, or you follow where I'm going on this. But I think we're backing into this thing, and it's just not defined. I feel bad for the Planning and Zoning Commission. What I sat through the other day, there are so many people just throwing everything out there, we've got to do another, you know, there's no framework, and we've got to get a framework for this. And it was January, five months ago, that we started this dialogue, and nothing has been done on it.
That's time right there.
Excuse me?
That was time, three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just respond a little bit, Stuart. One of the issues that we have as a county is, I believe, Mac, correct me if I'm wrong, the state requires one acre if you're putting in a septic system. And I could be wrong on that, but that's what I remember. And so when we modified the ordinance, we were modifying the ordinance because of what was going on in Spanish Valley. Most of those people had built on one acre or more, and once we got the sewer system in for them, we wanted to allow them, because they're on the sewer system, to be more like City Monticello, City of Blanning, where they had a quarter acre lot tied into the sewer system, so they could subdivide their one acre and hook up to a sewer system. So I know that's not.
That makes perfect sense when a sewer system is involved. But we are discussing septic systems that are not proven, they're not being maintained by people, you know, this developer that's come in with the ranches of Elk Meadows has no, I mean, at least in our development, we had roads coming in, we had water coming in, we had power coming in. None of that is addressed in this ranches of Elk Meadows proposal. And it seems to me that we are not being, we're not using foresight to make this thing happen. If I'm going to look across the way over there and see 100 campfires on people camping on third acre lots over there, I'm not going to be happy, and you're not going to be happy, and you guys are going to really be upset when they start the whole woods on fire out there. So, I mean, you know, my point is, we need to get this amendment going, and if it's a one acre, five acre, whatever you guys decide on, but it can't be as small as, you know, a third of an acre.
We do have subdivision requirements that state that the road work done before the county will accept it has to be up to county standards.
I was so happy to hear TJ weigh in on that, because this proposal was bad from the start. I almost got up and left because, you know, I looked at it and said, well, they don't conform as far as the roads go.
No.
It's out. And how many times will you allow them to come back and do over and do over and do over?
Yep. Well, I think we turned down that proposal.
All right.
The Elk Meadows one, where they were trying to do spot zoning, is that what you called it?
Yes.
But they were back with this proposal last week. It was, they are not going away, and we are going to be here every meeting, every planning and zoning meeting, every commission meeting until something's settled on this.
So, Mac, you know where we stand.
Absolutely. So we rolled out that same meeting. We actually rolled out the draft complete ordinance for the county, which is addressed this specific incident.
Where's that posted?
Posted online. If you look at the planning commission's agenda, you'll see a link to that.
And is that up to date?
In the work session, oh yeah. In the work session, they addressed that as well. What's that? No, there's not. To play some moratoriums is a different, that's a different avenue. In order to avoid a public hearing and kind of this dialogue where this is public comments, let's try to keep it just to the public comments, but I did want to let you know that we do have that draft ordinance, and I would recommend you look at that to make sure that is. One of the things that's missing, so we have the ordinance in total listed there, which, I mean, that's pretty much all the laws that we would abide by throughout the whole entire county, so not just specific to Elk Meadows. One of the things that's missing with that is the map that complies with this specific areas. So right now, we're working on the definitions and the legalities of the ordinances itself, what we can and what we cannot do, what, when does it require the health department's review, when does it require staff review, things like that. But it doesn't, it doesn't paint the pictures of where these specific areas comply to and which zones these areas are. The map is kind of a secondary in nature that, first, we wanted to get the definitions out before we start labeling each area of the county, you know, this is residential one, this is residential two, and then, so that's a little bit more, part of it is what has to take place is you, the public. We have to have you weighing in on the process, and so. Yeah, yep. Yeah, and I'll watch for that and see where we're specific to Elk Meadows, but it's online on our website. If you look at San Juan County, yeah, if you look at the planning commission agenda, it's in the work session. You can click on that link, and it'll bring up the whole entire ordinance as the draft. Now know that that draft language in there is subject to change, just because specifically we haven't had the public engagement, which is like, I think in any ordinance that is adopted, you have to have an extensive review from the public, and that is missing. Correct? And they can. Correct. Correct, and the developer can still, even with a moratorium, the developer still has the rights under the current zoning that has been adopted. We have to bring back another ordinance to replace that or to modify it, and there's a public process that we've got to go through before we can do that. We just can't place a moratorium to stop a developer.
Can we begin that public process?
It is begun. It came out last week for the public. So it has begun, yes, thanks, Stewart. Okay, sorry about that. The next one on here I have, I don't know, Greg, if you wanted to come up and take three minutes on that one?
My name's Greg Colbreath. I'm from Elk Meadows as well. And Stuart and I and another caller came to the planning and zoning, and I've got to say, I've been where you are. I've not, I have never been a county commissioner, but I've sat on a bunch of boards and never liked it and won't do it again. But having said that, I know that it really helps to have a specific order to things, and you guys need to be the last on the list to approve or disapprove, and you need to have almost all of the footwork done so that you're not doing it in a meeting like this, because this isn't the place to iron out all the details. They need to be ironed out so that you guys can approve or disapprove, you know, depending on how carried away you want to get with it. But it seems like the fire guys, the road and bridge guys, the health as far as EMS goes, and all the other folks, the state health, the state water division, those folks all need to be signed off before it ever gets to you. And they should all be signed off except for the Planning and Zoning Commission when it gets to them. So, you know, if somebody comes in and says, I have this subdivision that I'd like to get approved, then the next thing would be to hand them a sheet that would be attached to their subdivision plans and say, go ahead and get these all signed off, and require a health department, I mean, you're the county, you're the guys who run the county. The state doesn't run the county, the county runs the county. Make sure that the health department says.
You notify the state of that.
I don't have a problem with that. I realize that they think that they're the end, but the end is all the way at the other end of the state, and I'm not sure which end I prefer. Well, I prefer this end, but I'm not going to say anything about that end. We'll start talking about ends, and that's another thing. But anyway, I think it would really help everybody concerned if the subdivider brings his things to the road and bridge, and the road and bridge says, yeah, this will work except for this, 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 fix that, and we'll look at it. And by the time it gets to planning and zoning, it's, you know, they have to look at what the county's requirements are besides road and bridge, besides health, besides fire, and all of that's pretty well worked out, so that when it does land here at you guys for final approval, that's what it gets, either approved or denied, depending on whether they've jumped through all the hoops, but they do need to jump through the hoops in order, and that seems to be an important thing. That's all I've got. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, sorry about that. So I just had it crossed out on here, so Eva?
Yeah, that's my name. I'm Eva Chris. I'm also a resident of Elk Meadows since 2018, and we live here on and off, like part-time, but I follow the county commission since that time. And I first want to say my appreciation, thank you for the work you do here, because it's not easy, I know that. So I have a little history of like research doing on communities and sustainability, and that's why I'm here as well, to remind the commission not to do that spot zoning here anymore, and to rethink as well how many people, how many development this county needs and wants, and how you develop. And I know this is not the place here, but this is an example. Elk Meadows is an example of that we are all in basically this together. There is not much water out there, and look at the Abajos now, we are lesser than 50% of the snowpack this year. We are all on the aquifer in Elk Meadows, on the same aquifer. So that's why our wells are not very deep. So the aquifer refills every year, but if there is less the snowpack, more people, you can see what's happening, right? So that's one reason why I really would think like, long-term, that's my second point, like Elk Meadows is an example of, do we need how much development, how many people can we have with so and so much resources? Second point, this is just an example of, we are all in this together. The county is swamped with development, and you can see that. There is like developers coming in, and I'm not talking only about Elk Meadows, I'm talking about the luxury resorts in so-called Dry Valley. We call Dry Valley for a reason, you know, and I really want you and us to rethink even like the master plan, because the master plan is something, we want it to be rural, but also we need to take actually the conditions and the context into account how it changes now, like climate. I'm saying climate, like then Moab is getting really busy and expensive. This is coming here, so we really need to rethink, how do we want to rebuild or extend or develop our county? And I want to see people living here, like families who can afford a living here. And I think we have to rethink as well, how do we want to develop? And yes, Elk Meadows, back to Elk Meadows, please do away with the spot zoning there. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next one I have on here is Joe Miller. Joe Miller, so Joe.
Melon. This is the 2019 amendment on that side. And on the backside is the well drillers report that shows the lack of water that's over there, and also the percolation test that shows that it's very poor as far as as far as percolation goes for septic. Gentlemen, we, ladies, we brought all the facts that we could in January and February to try to shine reality on this spot zoning development that the out-of-town developer from Provo, all he wants to do is come in here and get as much money as he can, he's going to be gone, he's going to leave us with the problem. We're trying to stop that problem before it happens. Now, it seemed that the commission stopped the rezoning, so that was the first step. And then, we told the commission that this is the root of all our problems right here. This is the 2019th, the 10th amendment to our general plan that goes completely against the general plan. Whoever was responsible for doing this should, you know, we should find out who it is, and they need to.
Have a public flogging.
There we go. Or something. We need to get rid of this immediately, if not sooner, this bad amendment, the root to why planning and zoning can, can okay these spot zoning developments anywhere in the county, not just the ranches at Elk Meadows, they can do it anywhere. And we brought up all the reasons why that development was just bad from the beginning, and the commission agreed with us, and they stopped it, and they called for a moratorium on using this amendment going further, stop it, yet nothing happens. Planning and zoning are still using this amendment. They're still using it. After you guys said, stop using it. How many times do we have to come back here?
And bring this, is this Groundhog Day, or is this just a bad episode of Yellowstone that we're living through?
And and you bring this, is this Groundhog Day or is this just a bad episode of Yellowstone that we're living through? It's crazy. We, so please, guys, let's make this our top priority. Let's get rid of this amendment. Let's stop planning and zoning from from going further with this.
It's it's not a good idea. It's spot zoning. It was from the beginning. We tried to educate everybody on what spot zoning was.
That's time right there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Stuart.
We're trying to save our home and we need your help. We can't do it alone. Thank you.
I did check online on that agenda. It looks like it has the the ordinances and agenda item with the planning commission. Yeah, if you can, Scott. So it doesn't have a link to it.
Yeah, so the draft ordinances were discussed last Tuesday or last Thursday night at the planning commission work meeting. We did have a few minor changes that we need to make before it is fully published publicly, but that should be happening later today or tomorrow. So. So, yeah, we're working on that. And then just another thing, just real quick, I just want to encourage all the water comments. I recognize there's concerns about water. But the Division of Water Rights is the is the board that has the ability to handle that. They're the ones that issue the well permits. So the ones that handle all the applications. They hold public meetings. They're a division of the state. That's the entity that can actually do something about the water. And that's where we, I would encourage everybody to go contact them, let them know your concerns. That's where that those issues can actually be addressed. We, the planning commission looks at land use, looks at ordinances. The ordinances allow the ordinances allow one acre in the A1 zone as of right now. So the amendment that they're discussing was a preliminary plat review for the ranches at Elk Meadows came back with one acre lots in size. So it's permitted in zoning. There was some details. Their roads are going to be pub, are going to be private. They don't have to meet the county standards because they're keeping them as private. There was just some discussion about how that, I mean, how the note's going to be on the plat. But anyway, I just wanted to make that comment that, yeah, it was a preliminary plat review. That is coming down the road. We are doing all the groundwork at the planning commission and by staff. They're not asking the county commission to do the groundwork. We're doing those things as staff and planning commission. So anyway, and then the water stuff, go to the state because they're the ones that have control over it.
Scott, just some knowledge since I've been here. People want to make roads private and not meet the county standard. And then as soon as they sell all the lots and all the people move in, then they want the county to come in and and push the snow and do everything. I just, I just, it's a bad idea allowing private roads. I think we ought to really take a hard look at that because it'll always come back to the county. No matter how many times the developer says, I'll take care of it, they don't.
Right. And that was a big discussion was was, you know, having an HOA take ownership and the planning commission all said, no, those HOAs disappear.
Yeah, they do.
Nobody's there to maintain that road. So it's an issue. I don't know that I know the answer to it. It was discussed at length at the planning commission meeting. There's a lot of perspectives and a lot of sides of that argument. Developers want the county to take it. They don't want to keep ownership of it. The county doesn't really want to take them, even if it meets the, you know, the requirements, especially in this case, this road is has has several issues as far as why the county wouldn't want to take it. But anyway, there's, and so they're wanting to keep it private. But, yeah, the question of do we allow that?
Yeah.
Because we know in the future there's going to be potential.
From past experience, what's going to happen.
Right. So anyway, I just wanted to provide some clarification.
You'd sign up, Marka.
But they expect to see that, the draft ordinances posted end of the day today or first thing tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. You betcha. Come on, Ian, just you can state your name up there. I'll capture it.
Marka McLaughlin, and I also live at Elk Meadows. And I have a quick question for you all. On the private road maintenance, can you not make the HOAs that are being put in place have a bonded association with the county?
Can you make the people obey the speed limit?
I know, I know, but they, I'm just asking because.
It's hard. Law enforcement, I mean, enforcement of anything for the county to try and enforce people to do something is difficult. So I think we need to, we need to make the rule.
Okay.
Upfront.
I agree with you.
You meet the sound county standard.
Okay.
We'll take care of your road. And if they don't want to do that, they want to make a private road, I don't know.
I I just wonder, because in Colorado, they do like a bond in the whole metro and they have to pay to it. I just didn't know if that was possible for them to do that. Because you're right.
Thirty-page process for for people to to follow, to to get it to that standard. But we're, the county is there all along through that process. It's not.
I don't know. I don't know.
That's me, my ignorance, not knowing how things work here.
We can hire enough enforcement people to make
To do that.
To make everybody in the county obey the laws.
Okay. All right. Awesome. I just wanted to.
Okay, anyone else in the chamber? Marilyn, how are you? I seen you sign up. Good to see you here. So.
How do the county commissioner intervene?
How do you intervene?
Yeah.
Whether approved or not or disapproved when it comes before us.
I mean, there's issues, separate issues. One of the main is the the water rights.
It's the state.
And the state is way up there behind the mountain. Where I don't, I don't know if these people, concerned people are have access to.
Yeah, they do.
So the other issue is the amendment. I I see that greater need is more water. We'll have to do something.
Yeah, yep. Absolutely. And the ordinances, so.
So the water rights and the issue of water rights.
Yeah, that's a higher.
How do you get water rights? From Colorado River or?
The state.
It's groundwater.
Yeah, the state.
Water for wells for, and you get it.
I mean, that's not enough. As I understand.
That's their decision to make, not ours.
Yeah.
And that's a, so the challenge that you have and you hear the public, and this isn't a conversation that's taking place just in San Juan County. It's across the state. That's taken place is you may have a water share. So you may be entitled to one acre feet of water on your property. But what they're saying here in Elk Meadows is, well, we may have the entitlement or the shares for that water, but underground, if that water's not there, it doesn't matter how many shares you're entitled to. If everybody's pulling out of that same aquifer, there's not enough water in general, that aquifer depletes.
Right.
And then you start getting into an issue where you don't have quick enough recharge of the aquifer and too much drawdown. So you're drawing too much water down. And the state is supposed to regulate this. And that that's probably the difficulty that the state has is they go through every public or community water resource is supposed to be reporting the drawdown on aquifers to the state and the state's supposed to be monitoring that. But we see, and I think Enix City is is a prime example where they have drawn too much water off of their aquifer and their aquifer started to collapse on them and and cause a bunch more problems. And so we hear, I hear you, believe me. And I think the only way to combat that is in our ordinances is we're placing the conservation matter measures in our ordinances so that we have minimal lawn. It's more zero escaping. Things that pull, I mean, I drive by here, just in Monticello City alone, and I see people sprinkling in the middle of the day. Well, if we're all pulling from the same aquifer and we're sprinkling in the middle of the day, but because they have a well, they feel that I have this, I have this right to pull this water. But the water, everybody's competing for the same resource. And if it's not, if you don't get the recharge, you don't get the recharge. And so I think in that, our, all we can really do is, you know, in our ordinances, make sure that we're conserving as much water as possible, that we're putting those me- measures in there. You know, whether it's stopping for us in Spanish Valley, prime example, as we look at, you know, making sure we have the retention basin so we can stop the water from the flash flood, retain it, get the aquifer recharge in that area. But nevertheless, holistically, we have to be like-minded in that effort. We have to have the cities with us as well. Making sure, but then also continue to to ask the state, where are we at? Where are we at? Because we meet, we meet with our state representatives from the Division of Drinking Water monthly. You know, if not weekly, we're in conversations with them. And so it's something that we can definitely continue to ask, hey, where are we at in our water? I know in our public and community water systems, those reports continue to go up to the state of the Division of Drinking Water so that we're all monitoring the same thing. But there's really not a lot of teeth with that monitoring that comes with it. Yeah.
Wouldn't us addressing this terrible?
Zoning, that's, yeah, that'll come.
With that water problem that we have.
Making bigger acreage out of your individual house, your property that you own.
Putting in cluster homes out in the country where they don't belong, maybe, you know, like Stuart was saying, a five-acre minimum would certainly help, you know, and getting rid of this amendment would be, we should have done this already, Matt.
Possibly, but I could also argue ten small mini homes that have less water consumption on just small homes. And so.
After January, when we decided that it was time to get rid of this bad amendment to our general plan, why is it still being used today? Why?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that question. We are going, like I mentioned, we are going through our zoning ordinances and modifying everything to where, like, for example, the A1 zone, we're getting rid of the A1 zone that's a classification just across the board. They've kind of used it nefariously across the county instead of putting residential areas where they should actually be R1, R2. And so as we look at that, your A1, your agricultural, we're looking at those to be the five to 10 acre lots. And you can't go to a smaller residential in those, especially where they're supposed to be farm, land, or agriculture or ranch. We need to protect those resources in the future. And so they will be in there. Correct.
This bad amendment circumbates the general plan.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the hard part. You get the amendments. And that's why I hate piecemealing an amendment to an ordinance. Let's take a look at it. And that's kind of where we're at, is we're taking a look at the whole entire ordinance itself instead of just that one. No, we can't. There's a public process that we have to go through to do that.
Well, that's what you told us in January.
And we're working on it.
With with putting a moratorium on using that bad, it's just bad.
He would still, you still have rights as a as a land use owner. He's following the land use ordinance that has, as it is stated right now. He's following that.
He's gonna, he's doing it. He doesn't live here. He doesn't care about it.
Doesn't have to be. He owns the property.
To some unsuspecting people, and he's going to be gone. We're not going to see him again.
He owns the property and the property is owned at that right now.
But spot, making a spot zoning.
We'll turn it down, just like we did before. When it comes to the commission, if it's a spot zone, we'll turn it down.
Thank you.
We're the last say.
Thank you.
I would like to, I don't know, this is not a discussion, but you have the commission can make incentives to bring people here or not. And I think this is the overall picture. An incentive would be like, yeah, you can do whatever you want. Not to incentivize more people or swimming pools in Dry Valley, that is something you can do. And I would appreciate that. And I want to go, Scott said that something about like the state. I feel like the buck is passed always to the next entity. And in Utah, there have been communities who stopped developing because of a lack of water, because it's really slow till things happen here. And this is where you come in place. And I don't want to be like you and them and me and you. It's all of us. We are all dependent on this water. And you can just like look forward, you know, we're all in this together and not look just for the next 20 years. It's more about the next like 200. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need more?
Okay, so we're done with that discussion. Let's check online. For those of you wishing to make a public comment online, if you can, there's a raise your hand feature. If you right-click on your name, it'll pop that up. Not seeing any hands raised. If there's anyone, you can go ahead and unmute yourself if you're wishing to make a public comment. I'm not seeing anyone unmute themselves. So commissioners, that is your public comment period for today.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. One through, what is it, seven? Mr. Adams?
I'd like to talk about the check register just to be transparent a little bit. On page 17 of the register, we have 894,45101 to Coughlin Company, and I believe that's a road project.
Yes, that's your, you call that Summit Road?
But I just, you know, we've got $3 million we're paying out today.
You are. That's a lot of money. Yes.
Is that the West Summit?
That is correct. Yep.
Then on page 22, we have 2,6585021 54, and that's JAviation. That's all money being spent at the Cow Black Airport. That money comes to the county. We're a pass-through on it and, or no?
So it's not a pass-through. That's, that is the the Cow Black project, the resurfacing of the runway, if you remember.
But we don't pay for that out of general fund money, do we?
So typically you do. And just for transparency, so nobody gets lost in typically, there, there's a 10% charge for any project. State covers 5%. County covers 5%. We started this project two years ago and designed for it and COVID hit. And so when COVID hit, the FAA come out and said, hey, any project that's in the queue right now, we're going to cover with CARES Act funds 100%. So the feds came back and said, we'll cover the cost for the Cow Black runway 100%. And so this is all reimbursable. That 2,65,000 is 100%.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at is, that's not coming from taxpayer money here in the county. That's coming from federal money that we.
It is. And we don't have to come up with a 5% match for that. It's 100% covered by the FAA.
And we just received that money back today. So.
Did you already, huh?
So it's out the door and then the feds send the check through the state.
Well, there's some more 10 and 20,000 expenditure compared to the million dollars, I guess.
Yeah, that one I was, I was hoping you'd see that one. So then I knew you were looking at it. And so, yep, absolutely. We were prepared for that one. But it is the FAA. They pay us back on that. Next year will be a little bit different.
Okay, so Commissioner Gray, eyes with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the general fund check register for 5.1 to 5.13 of 2022.
Just that single item?
They're all part of it. Yeah. The whole register.
One through.
It comes to a little over 3 million, 3,700,000.
He's asking for everything on the consent agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. We've approved everything on the consent agenda, including, including the check.
Second.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Maryboy. Any further question? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, nay? There'd be none. Three in favors, there are opposed. Motion carries. On the consent agenda. Next, we have update wildfire risks.
Another question. Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
So Brittany, welcome to commission meeting. I know you're going to be here every time. So Brittany, welcome to commission meeting. I know you're going to be here every time. In the consent agenda, we had some contracts between the county. And others for, for instance, we had one between the county and Peggy Scott. Did you review that? Have you reviewed those contracts? Okay, so when we come, Mac will make you aware of any contracts on the agenda. And we'd like you to review those prior to us approving them. We didn't do that today. Because obviously you weren't in the queue yet, but moving forward, if you'll kind of be aware of that, that any contracts that the county enters into, we'd like to have the, the county attorney review those prior to our approving them. So maybe you'll have to go back and look at the ones for today and make sure we didn't make any mistakes. Seemed like we're making mistakes right and left right now.
Yeah, Ross is down to the team.
Yeah, yep. And so she's in the queue now. However, with two of those contracts, there's a conflict with her reviewing those. And so, but all of the other contracts certainly she has had.
See, I told you I'd bring up a problem.
Yeah, the two legal ones, we couldn't have her review, but um, I'm assured that, so attorneys have reviewed those other contracts, but with that one, but nevertheless, she has actually access to the system now and everything for that. So she's already firing away.
Be ready.
So update on the twenty twenty two wildland fire risk in U S Forest Service B L M and forestry fire and state lands, state fire. Turn it over to our warden himself. He could introduce, introduce the team. So we're on item number eight. Which is just an update.
Yeah, my name's Ryan McArthur. I'm San Juan County Fire Warden. So I, um, here with the state. I'm dealing with forestry fire and state lands. So we deal with all unincorporated lands in the county, um, associated with wildland fires. So my, I'm just here kind of giving.
As you can see, we had no problems with our land in the county, you know?
None. We're, we're all good. So yeah, just kind of a brief update off of, um, last year. So my engine, um, we responded about seventy eight different, um, fire reports throughout the county. Um, and that goes, that went from June first through October thirty first, which is the fire season. On that, um, everything pretty stayed. Um, single tree, low acreage, other than the big one that went off with Pat Creek. Um, that was an early fire season, kind of caught us all off guard on what happened with that one. Um, so yeah, so hopefully we're ramping up, um, this year to be another season. We are in the drought. Um, it's there. It's the potentials there. Hopefully, um, we've got the word out to a lot of people. Um, we've put out fire sense campaigns. We've done a lot of stuff for campaigning for people to be more cautious with, um, fires, um, with things like that. Again, say, um, that's pretty much all that we have for the state. Um, Terry Gardner with the Forest Service and Clark Mon with the B L M are here, um, kind of give their assessment on their lands and how they're feeling things are going for them. Um, there's not any other questions. I'll turn it over to them.
Joe, one question, commissioners don't have a question. So one of the things that, you know, last month, I think, believe it was last month, we had asked, um, for the allowance to go ahead with fire restrictions, stage one, um, already this year. And that was denied based off of the factors, whether it was humidity, um, water in the soil content, uh, things like that. My, my question is, and you may not know, this may be more of a Rudy or Jason question, but in, in that, um, evaluation, they never, so they looked at the humidity and they looked at, you know, your water, soil content. But they left off the human element. Pat Creek Fire last year was human caused. Uh, and so if we know that we're in a drought right now with a lack of water and a majority of the fires in the state are human caused, why, why wouldn't the state be pushing and the Forest Service and the B L M? Why wouldn't we be pushing for those restrictions already to be put in place where we know that the timber is already dry, the vegetation there is dry, uh, why, why wait? Because I mean, the, the majority of the state fires this last year were human related. And so for me, if we get the, if we, if we stop the maverick from selling firewood to tourists, you know, if we can get those restrictions put in place and the education out there to campers, the no fires and only propane, doesn't that in essence save us money from fighting these, these bigger fires that tend to happen?
How do I say this? Um, kind of goes back, same thing that the commissioner said is how are we patrolling that? How are we going to enforce every citizen in the U S, the state, the county, whatever, to obi- obey every law that's out there? We're not gonna be there, so we have to fall back on the science. We have to fall back on to all the conditions and everything that match up. You know, and so with them conditions and the way that the fuel loading, the moistures, the, um, E R Cs, all of that come out and play in line is it is not hitting that threshold that has been set nationally for them fire restrictions to be implemented. In the email that I believe he was part of the chain of with the comment that Rudy said is that's, that is going for, you know, the statewide Forest Service, everybody, we all get together, we all make that decision to make it easier to patrol, to make everybody fall into that category together and make it work. Um, and that's the same thing with the counties coming in that's going with them. It's not saying you can't put that restriction out or your county can't go into restrictions. I'm not sure how all of that works and what paperwork and what has to be done, but then it comes back down to the mere fact of how are you going to patrol that? Um, you know, we're going to have to have law enforcement out there going around, making them citations, actually enforcing that stipulation on your county as opposed to if we do it across the board, then we can get more campaigning out. We can get more information out, um, with our, you know, our partners, Forest Service, B L M, everybody doing it together. It's, it's so much easier to have it all done together and work together on it and make it go across as it is to separate that out, um, and go with it. So that's one of the things with the states, put out the Firewise campaign that is addressing a lot of them issues that you're saying, you know, one last spark, um, there's multiple things out there, um, that's been addressed and put out there to help educate the public, to get them to know and see the drought conditions and what's there and be a lot more responsible. Um, with that, um, I think the fire, human caused fires last year actually dropped from what it's been in the past. Um, I actually don't have the numbers. I have to pull up my website to see and get Kaylee, um, RPIO from the state that could give us them numbers exactly of how much it's dropped just with the campaign going out. So it's, it's in the works, it's out there. Um, that we're hoping to do that.
Okay, thanks for that.
So, anything else?
So yeah, it's not just, it's not just the fuel moistures and soil moistures and stuff. There's other things that go into models and, and everything that calculates the, uh, energy, energy release component, the burn index and a handful of other things that we use to say, okay, we're at risk for large fire, catastrophic fire. Um, and then in the early seasons in the spring, um, it's typically not getting to that point yet to where we're not worrying about fire spread. So, um, just to add to that a little bit. So hand you guys.
That's the, uh, chief's letter of intent for this year, the Forest Service Chief. This is seasonal outlook. Okay, I'll introduce myself now. I'm, I'm Terry Garner. I'm the Fire Management Officer for the Moab Monticello Ranger District for the Forest Service here. I'll start off with the seasonal outlook, um, the second one I handed you guys. This is the national, um, outlook. Gives the general, um, monthly outlook for, um, each region. So, um, basically to summarize, I'll let you guys, uh, read this if you want to later on, but um, we've been seeing a drier, um, windier spring than normal, a little bit drier um, and windier than normal. That'll persist through this month, through June, actually. And then, um, it's predicting a, a wetter than normal monsoon like last year, probably. So come July or so, they're saying that it looks like we're going to have a wet monsoon. So right now, uh, generally we'll continue to see a drying trend, um, for the next month through June and then, um, see some relief.
Did you say July is going to be wet?
In, in, in July, we'll start seeing those monsoons coming up. They're, they're saying that they're seeing, um, a really strong, uh, pulse from the Pacific. Well, thanks. So unless there's questions more for specifics on that, um, that's all I have for that one. So I'll talk about our projects and what we've got going on before I go into the chief's letter. Um, this spring, you guys have seen that we've been doing, um, quite a bit of burning. We did have really good conditions to be able to burn. Um, this, this spring, we started kind of early on the, um, Mill Creek project. Some of it's in San Juan County. The majority of that is in Grand County. But we've, uh, we've burned about eight hundred acres of, uh, hand piles down there near the Loop Road. Um, out of Moab. And, um, currently we've got contractors out there thinning and piling about another eight hundred acres of that that'll be available to, to be able to burn, um, probably next spring. With the, uh, with the, uh, Shingle Mill Project, uh, that's been ongoing project. We've burned so far this spring, a little over eleven hundred acres up there. Um, it's been about two weeks now since our last burn day and, um, and we have, uh, a masticating contractor up there right now. They're, they're masticating close to the, uh, private boundaries, uh, on this east side of that project right now. That'll total about five hundred and fifty acres. And that's using, uh, W R I funds that we get through the state. Um, so now I'll get into some of the chief's letter. It states in here that we had ninety nine days of, um, planning level four or five uh, risk last year. So that's, that's pretty high. And most of that wasn't due to us. We just had a few large fires in our dispatch area, but a lot of that was from California and other states that had, um, large fires that persisted through the summer. But that does, that does add to our, um, lack of resources availability um, to consider when, when we're trying to figure out how we want to manage certain fires that we have. So, um, he is acknowledging that. So, so goes along with that, um, he states in here that we must use all the tools available to increase hazardous fuel reduction. And, um, and mentions that we have to, um, cooperate, we have to, uh, communicate with our cooperators. For us, that's the B L M and the state resources and, and utilize those resources as best we can to, uh, manage the fires, um, the most responsible way that, uh, that we can with the resources we have. So he mentions in here that we have a finite, finite resources to make choices and, uh, and, uh, we should only be committing resources, meaning firefighters to operations where they have a high probability of success. So, um, some of that goes into our decision making, uh, mostly on the Forest Service. Uh, but you know, sometimes, especially if we do see a good monsoon where we have some moisture, we'll have more opportunities to be able to manage fires for resource benefits and utilize barriers like roads, cliff bands and things like that, um, and burn additional acres, uh, providing for some resource benefits with that. And those are some of the decisions we have to make and talk about, talk to the other resource staff to see if that's the right decision to be able to do that. And a lot of that's for providing for firefighter, uh, safety and long-term fatigue as well. He talked about, uh, uncharacteristic wildfire, meaning, you know, what we've been seeing across the West is, um, more intense fire more often. And, uh, and that we need to really consider that when we're tasking our firefighters to put them on the line, um, where there may not be very many, um, uh, values at risk. We might just have forest out there. Yeah, that's a resource, but are there homes? Are there comm towers? Are there power lines, infrastructure? Um, we need to look at that while we're trying to make those decisions and ensure that we're not putting firefighters out in front of something that's just putting them at risk for undue benefits. So he mentions in there, putting them in the right place at the right time for the right reasons. Let's see. And I think I covered that other stuff. And that's the whole document that we got. That's his, um, leader's intent for us. Uh, as far as the Forest Service to continue on, uh, through the season. And that's all I've got. Are there any questions?
My recommendation is what Mr. McDonald brought up. Preparedness, prevention. And if we don't do those, yes, we will face major fires somewhere down the road. We don't know. One of the critical element that involve is the fuel. Gasoline costs, travel costs, transport costs. Fire is burning the force over here. And we're burning the dollars over here to, uh, contain the fire. I think the more the idea of a concept, yeah, that Mr. McDonald brought up. It needs to be critically reviewed. Maybe offer the idea to the state. Say, hey, what's wrong? It's not going to take place immediately. The control, the, uh, the leasing, the enforcement. Maybe just an education would, uh, do the trick. Public education. Rather than, uh, hiring people to, uh, to, to implement enforcement. That's what did I say?
Yeah. So, uh, we do have, we all, uh, all the agencies have prevention personnel. We do, um, public outreach and, uh, hit events, the schools, um, different things to, um, to, to help just educate the public on, um, on fire prevention. That's just a part of the whole, um, the whole picture of all. That's just a part of the whole, the whole picture of all of it. A lot of it and it's in the chief's letter here too, is that we do have a lot of fuel loading that that shouldn't be there. That's been generated over over a hundred years now of too aggressive of fire suppression. And that's where we're at now. We're not as bad here as a lot of other places just because of how dry it is here. We don't get the fuels that grow so thick like other areas. But we do still have to manage those fuels in other ways too. We we have to spend money to put people out there to thin it, pile it, burn it. And the the best opportunity that we have a lot of times is managing fires for resource benefit. You know, I think it was three years ago that we were able to manage some fires on the forest. We burned, we got a little over four thousand acres on the Peavine Fire that came out of the wilderness by the Peavine Trailhead back by Dry Mesa. And then we had the poison fire. There was about another fifteen hundred acres. And then the Chapeans one and two, we managed all those fires that year and actually didn't have very much severe burn characteristics at all. It made a good difference, just mostly similar to what we just did over here on the Shingle Mill project where we're burning the floor. We're we're taking, we're getting rid of the the small needle cast and some of the larger diameter diameter logs and stuff, but over a larger area. So that when fires come, if we get a fire that stands up and starts burning and hits those areas, it drops back down to the forest floor and then we can do something with it and suppress it. But those are some of the other things that we do have to do to be able to manage the forest appropriately.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking. I know Navajo Mountain has a lot of dead and downs. And I put together a rough draft of I sent it to Navajo Nation Fire Forestry. And nothing happened. Every time I look at it, I just hope and pray that nothing sparks up there. So dry.
Yeah.
It's very steep, difficult to get up at the platform. So. Thank you very much.
We also have Clark Mon here. From the BLM.
That's a good report from the forest. Now let's see if you can.
Well, good morning. Actually, I guess it's afternoon. I heard the siren out there, but my name is Clark Mon. I'm the fire management officer for the Canyon Country District BLM and we've also got some of our district leadership here, Gary Torres and Jake Palmer as well, so. For the BLM side of things, Ryan did a great job explaining fire restrictions here. We do have weekly conversations, the fire management group from the Forest Service, the BLM, Forestry, Fire and State Lands and the Park Service. We're talking weekly about where we are with our fuels. You know, Ryan mentioned ERC. That's our energy release component, which is a metric we use that looks at the heavier fuels and our potential for a large fire on the district. So we kind of, we measure that in a percentile right now. We're at about that seventy to seventy fifth percentile. That's, you know, trending upward. It follows the seasonal trend. We generally peak right around the end of June to first of July with our our most severe fire potential. So we're we're keeping an eye on that. Right now we're trending at about average. Last year we were well above average. I think, you know, Pat Creek Fire and some of the other fires we saw in Carbon County, you know, were good examples of that. So we are watching that. You know, we've got a fair amount of green up going on right now. It's started to cure all of our fine fuels down in lower elevations around Moab and Spanish Valley. That's already curing out rapidly. You know, that's going to follow suit up here in the higher elevation. So we do, you know, have a fair amount of fine fuel loading out there. That's going to be a contributing factor as well that'll come into play as that continues to dry out. Once we do go into restrictions, you know, one of the things about going into restrictions too early and we we experienced this two years ago. We extended restrictions well into almost through Halloween. I think it was sometime around the first of November when we actually eased up the restrictions and it enforcement becomes a big issue like Ryan was mentioning and the public kind of becomes numb to that message. And so we want to, you know, we'll, the land management agencies will work aggressively to keep that on the forefront of the the public's mind. I'm over in that fire, those conditions and prevention is a big part of that. And actually the interagency group, you'll you'll see at the Maverick Gas Stations this year, they, we have some ads and PSAs that'll be playing when people pump their gas. That'll be the fire sense message and you know, a good prevention message. So we are actively working towards that. Here locally in southeastern Utah, San Juan County, Grand County, our sagebrush is is another indicator of where we are with, you know, our potential for a large fire spread in the lower elevations. And that's also trending at about average right now and the fuel moisture that we measure. Our Pinion Juniper has continued to just bottom out. It's really been hit hard by the the long term drought here and it's continuing to be dry. We're seeing a fair amount of mortality in the Pinion and Juniper forest and that's contributing to the the fire load, the potential for large fires out there. See locally for the Bureau of Land Management, our district, we have three engines. All of our fire staff are on right now. We're spending a few weeks going through our critical training. And then we'll have everybody available to fight fire. We have three fire engines. One's based out of here in Monticello. We have two based out of Moab. We also have helicopter and crew based out of Spanish Valley. And then a water tender and then our dispatch center, of course, which works closely with San Juan County as well. Out of Spanish Valley out there at Ken's Lake. See, I just, you know, a few of the themes that all of the agencies are following this year, of course, is that 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 safety is the priority, firefighter and public safety is always going to be the first priority. And Terry mentioned that risk management, that's something that firefighters and managers will be using before they engage in any fire is can they do it safely and not put people's lives at risk, not taking any undue risk. We've seen with the pandemic and everyone's wanting to get out of the woods, definitely an increase in in recreation. That's led to an increase in fires. Last year we did see it, you know, a drop in those numbers. But that's that's an ongoing issue that we're aware of. We've got a lot of people out in the forest and they like to have fires and and how we address that. So we're actively working on that in the prevention mitigation side of things. Fuels management, that's a big part of our program as well. This last winter, we were able to do quite a bit of pile burning down to the Blanding East project. We were able to finish off our Devil's Canyon project as well. So those have been a couple of ongoing projects for the last several years. And then working towards habitat recovery or habitat restoration fires as well. Two weeks ago, we were able to burn a small unit up on Ray Mesa out by Old LaSalle as well, so. In that Ponderosa ecosystem. I think just a couple other themes for us, you know, like Terry mentioned, we're seeing the the severity, the size and the intensity of fires is growing, the length of fire season is growing. We're seeing that here locally where our fire season is extending into October and starting earlier and earlier every year. Been a little below average, I think, in total number of fires this year, which is unusual for us. See, we're also as the, on the federal side of things, working to shift away from our our seasonal firefighting force and work in the long term towards converting a lot of these seasonal positions into permanent positions to be able to maintain a solid firefighting force. There's a lot of work that goes into onboarding employees and having to bring them on and go through all the training. And if we can have someone that works for us more permanently, that that'll fix that problem. And then our firefighters, you know, are continuing to support the national cause as well. We've been sending fire crews down to the Southwest to support New Mexico, Arizona and Texas earlier this season. And that'll, that'll hopefully work out well for us when we need help and we can reach out to other states to to bring in firefighters for us. I think that's all I have, but I thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Mr. Eddie.
Did you guys do the, I I might be using the wrong word, but just south of Verger, there's a big mastication process or where they're chopping up the trees or anything? Was that yours or the?
That was part of that Shingle Mill project.
Oh, that was part of. Okay.
And they did, they did masticate on private land as well.
Good. I want, I want to encourage you to do more of that all the time, especially when it comes to PJ and things that take so much water. Yeah, I'd like to see. That's what I saw. Is it, do you know, is that the private people doing that? All right. Awesome.
Yeah, that cost per acre on a mastication process is a lot cheaper than a wildfire.
Oh, yeah. Good report.
Thank you.
I don't think one report was better than the other, no, I think they're about equal.
We need three of us to make sure.
Exactly.
Mr. Berry Boy, you had a motion?
These are just presentations. I don't know if you need to take action.
No, no action is needed. Next, that case. Down to Bill.
Okay, number nine on our agenda. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you showing up for that presentation. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but you can if you want. It's exciting stuff, Jake. Jake, come on. Jake will be back next month. They'll, we'll have him on agenda for Bears Ears and so we're excited for that presentation. So number nine, we've got presentation of the Senate Bill one seventy nine and discussion regarding the creation of a county criminal justice coordinating council as required prior to January first, twenty twenty three. So in here, this is one of those gifts that the legislators gave us.
Does it come with the money?
Top down, no. Dictating that that we do, so.
Talking about dry, dry valley.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so in this bill. Line twenty requires the county to create a criminal justice coordinating council subject to certain requirements. And it kind of, for me, it gets along the lines of more coordinating our efforts of policing or what's taking place in the county jails. And see on page ninety, let me get to the right page here. So on line ninety one has now that the county jail has a reporting requirement for inmates and those that are in custody. And then further down in the bill that I want to scroll down to. It has this coordinating that you are now in charge of. So. Let me go through. So one eighty seven kind of creates the definition for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Line two oh nine in here is where it begins. So beginning.
Did you say there wasn't any money appropriated because on page two, it talks about money appropriated in this bill?
For the Department of Human Services and the mental, the substance abuse and mental health at the state. They allocated funds to this, but not.
Not the local mental health or behavioral health.
Nothing that I could find on there. Yeah.
So tell us what the punishment is. Come up here.
It does put your grant funds.
So we get grant money from mental health and behavioral health? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Or criminal?
I think it's just the mental health and behavioral health, but I'm not positive on that. I I mean, this is just recently passed and I know it's it's in my queue of things to do and so I'm going to get with some of the supervisors of the other agencies and get one of these councils together before the end of the year so that we can make sure we get the grant money that we've been receiving.
So you're the one that's going to kind of organize these councils or you're just going to do it in conjunction with?
I think in conjunction with, yeah. So I'm just, I'm just going to get get with them and make sure that it gets done so that we don't lose out on that money because I know I just don't want it to be put on the back burner long enough that people forget about it because it's it's very recently passed.
And do you know how much money is attached to this or is this money that we're getting in grants?
Oh, page forty, so line item forty four, forty three has the money appropriated to the bill. They took, so to General Fund Restricted Behavioral Health Crisis Response Account as an ongoing appropriation from the General Fund, a million dollars. So that's at the state level and then to the Department of Health and Human Services, Integrated Health Care Services, Non-Medicaid Behavioral Health Treatment and Crisis Response, an ongoing appropriation from the General Fund Restricted for Behavioral Health Crisis Response for a million dollars. And so that's all at the state. It doesn't have extra line items going to each county. But there are these opportunities for grounds, for grants and federal funding as well. That's that's one of the things that, and I'll touch on that a little bit later in my discussion as well, but.
I see some language in here about drug court.
So let me go through this creation and see how how we want to do it. So on line item one eighty seven is the definition. Then I went to two oh nine. I like to cut through the chase on all of the the legal jargon. But this is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council on here. Says, beginning January first, twenty twenty three, a county shall, that's that shell word, create a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council or jointly with another county or counties, create a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. The purpose of this council is to coordinate and approve components of the criminal justice system in the county or counties. A council shall include one county commissioner or county council member, the county sheriff or the sheriff designee, one chief of police of a municipality within the county or the chief's designee, the county attorney or the county, the attorney's designated one public defender or an attorney who provides public defense within the county, one district court judge, Commissioner Adams, that was your question, and one justice court judge. One representative from the Division of Adult Probation and Prole within the Department of Corrections, one representative from the local mental health authority within the county and one individual who is a crime victim or a victim advocate. Council may include an individual representing local government, human services program, higher education, peer support services, workforce services, local housing services, mental health and substance abuse, use disorder providers, a healthcare organization within the county, local homeless council, family counseling and support groups or organizations that work with families or incarcerated of incarcerated individuals or an individual with lived experiences in the criminal justice system. And then it gets into kind of, once we're formed, a council shall develop and implement a strategic plan for the county or county criminals justice system, mapping of all the systems, resource. mapping of all the systems, resource, assets, and services within the county, and develop a plan for data sharing across the counties or counties criminal justice system, recidivism, reduction objectives, and community reintegration goals. Then says the commission may assist a council in the development of a strategic plan. Before November thirtieth of each year, a council shall provide a written report to the commission regarding those things that were just mentioned above, um, as well as any data and impact that we have.
Thank you. This legislation?
So up on top, here's kind of behind the scenes. There, there are a lot of broken cogs in, in the will of our justice system throughout the nation, you could say. And here in the state, there's a lot of missing coordination that needs to take place. And this, what I see is an effort to push that coordination more at a local level instead of just the state. Um, as the Department of Human Services has tried to implement system as, systems of care across all the branches of government, it's still missing this local component. And so speaking to, um, some of those that had helped draft this bill up on top, um, a lot of it is to reduce that recidivism and make sure that we have a plan in place to try to reduce individuals going to jail or reden, same offenses happening over and over again, to try to develop a plan to tackle any local issues that we may have. If there's an agency that's not playing in the sandbox well with others, it's bringing them all to the table. How do we face our problems here on a local level? And you commissioners are now in charge of this committee, trying to get everybody going and try to steer it. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up. We do have to have this created by January. One of the things that's interesting, the school districts are not included as one of them. It has education services in here. And so would they're one that I think would be a good entity to have on here as well as bringing everybody together. There's also not the criminal justice services, it's your, your CJC, so your children's justice services. Um, they're not included in here and I think they're also a key player here in our county. We support, um, the CJC here and in Grand County. With their efforts kind of as, as a, at a children's level. So it's bringing everybody together, uh, including the judges, which will be interesting. How do we get everybody? I don't know, but we have to have a strategy, you know, plan before November of next year. And so I think it's gonna, I think more than likely what you'd see is a quarterly meeting. Once a year would be hot, tough. There is a grant opportunity that we're aware of to help with our jail, kind of an education program that, um, the state is looking at as well where we could be awarded up to a million dollars to help inmates, uh, in our jail system achieve a higher education, not just a, a GED level of education, but actually a university degree, so bachelor's or a master's type degree system, all in an effort to try to help culminate this. I don't know which one of you commissioners wants to be in charge of this in this bill. It states that a commissioner is in charge of running this show or I don't know how you want to play it out.
It'll include more than ten people on the.
Oh, yes, this is going to be, this is everybody that was listed on there.
How many?
So, yeah, so it's, it's huge. Um, I mean, you think of just
A whole community.
Yeah, one chief of police from each municipality. Well, there's three. And so it's, yeah, it's a big, and I've seen, I've seen this work. Beaver County, uh, has started this years ago. Um, they've been kind of doing it all along from what I've seen more on a minimal scale, not this state legislative mandate type committee, but theirs is more, they just meet and see where the problems are and try to address the problems through their local systems. Us, this would be getting it going. I don't know what you want me to do. We can start it. I can start to get the list of names and fill in the blanks. She's a member, so yeah, she's, she's definitely listed as one of those on here. And so, but it does, it states somewhere in here where Commissioner, you, one of you are the chairs. Um, I can help you out, get everything lined up to go and then we can formalize it there. It doesn't state that there has to be bylaws in here, but I think the bill is pretty much dictatory in itself to where it gives us that direction and what we need to do. And so stay tuned, I guess. But either you can delegate it or volunteer. Commissioner Maryboy can be. He probably not even listening.
He's not here to defend himself.
He's on there. You see him. But I can certainly help get the key players and fill out the names on their scheduled meeting and then work with one of y'all to, to get things going. And so it would be a local meeting of, you know, those local representatives here in Blanding and Monticello and bluff. So get things going. We've got to have it, everything up and running here in January. So it gives us a little under.
By next January, right?
Jan, oh, this twenty.
By this?
January, yeah. This next one, January twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yep.
So we're not, we're not in violation yet?
Nope. We are ahead of the game.
Next time I see Todd White or on the TV, I'm going to change channels.
This is Christian said, yeah, this came from more of the juvenile justice portion. And so.
Well, there's something that's prompted this, obviously.
Yeah.
This legislation on my, my pleasure.
I think it's more, it, this is an easier, it's an easier ask along the Wausatch front in a smaller county. And so.
It's just to reduce. There's two, two ways, I guess, I'm looking at. One of them is to reduce the rate of recurrence recidivism. The other one is behavior health, mental health is out there. Detention is over here.
Yeah. Connecting.
No treatment being provided to decrease the to remedy the, uh, the problem.
Yeah.
The individual detainment would be, uh.
There you go, Brad. So, thanks for everything. Congrats. Yeah, so there is that. It'll be a challenge and I, so it's like we're all going to meet and we're going to develop a report. Okay, and then what? What's, what's the, okay, next steps? There's not, the next steps here is well, then the state will fund it. We've got enough reports that go up to the state that are unfunded mandates and unfunded reports. And so it shall be interesting to see where it goes, but I know we're working on a grant, um, application right now that kind of helps with the county jail to receive educational funding, um, in that regard, which is kind of coordinated with this effort, but more county jail-ish.
At one time, I don't know if it's still happening, but Utah State had a, an offering for incarcerated people to work on college. Do you know if they still do that?
I know that the, um, one of the doctor, one of the professors that works at Utah State is one that recognized the fact that, hey, there's this grant funding, let's apply for it. And so he's, he's a local here in San Juan County that's helping us with that project.
Okay.
And helping with the education program, um, with, um, with our county jail. So stay tuned. I'll bring something back for you when we can paint that picture a little bit brighter, but. We are going to that one. Yeah, I'll bet. Yeah. Yeah, I think we're, you signed up.
Yeah, I'm going.
I don't know if Commissioner Graves, if you signed up. I know I signed up as well to, because that, you're right, that is with juvenile justice, the sheriffs and substance abuse.
Will you be there?
I will probably be there.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
If not me, Aaron will be there.
Awesome.
Really? Recovered then?
Totally.
Brittany's going to that or do they have county attorneys?
I think county attorneys and sheriffs, county sheriffs are also supposed to be involved in that as well. Yeah, yep. Other than that, that's all I have for that item.
Does it, does it say how many meetings?
No, it doesn't. Just says the report is due by November. So it gives you just less than a year to formulate everything and come up with a strategy and a plan. And so it'll be interesting to see. I think the first challenge is just going to get everybody there at this table. A lot of key players. So we would be on business action items that are next on the agenda.
This is only a report too, huh?
Correct, yeah, yep. Yeah, unless you have a volunteer that wants to sign up to be that chair.
We'll decide that.
Commissioner, I wonder if we ought to skip down to thirteen and hear from Tammy and and Aaron, then we can go back up to ten. Whatever you want to do.
These other ones go pretty fast.
You think they will?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can, we can breeze, we can breeze through these real fast.
Well, we can accommodate them.
Yeah. Yeah, either one.
Should we go to thirteen? Come on up.
It's not on a Friday, so.
I don't think there's any more entertainment today.
So, wow, good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Aaron Duke. I'm the clinical director at San Juan Counseling. I'm just here today to ask for your consideration and approval for our San Juan Counseling's fiscal year um, twenty-three area plan. So my understanding is that you've all had the opportunity or, and have access to this. I do have a hard copy if you want it for reference.
We have it in our binders.
I have it in our binder. So, um, essentially I'm here to, um, just answer any questions, address any concerns and make sure that we're in alignment so we can continue to do the excellent work that we do within San Juan County. So um, I, I guess I don't have too much to present. Um, there are having a few changes. It's, it's essentially the same as, uh, last year's area plan with a few changes um, based on, um, either, um, a change in our resources. We have had the opportunity to hire a few additional people um, that can provide additional services. Um, but other than that, the plan's basically the same, so.
This thing's what, over eighty pages long?
Over eighty pages long.
Small little book.
Small little book, so. I think any changes to it, it will be, uh, from last year's have been outlined in blue.
The one's in blue?
Yeah, if you do have a color copy of it, so.
Okay.
I have some questions, commissioners.
A motion?
I'll just say this. If Tammy was involved in it, I'm good with it. I make a motion that we accept it.
Make a motion?
And pass the.
I'll sign the document.
Let's see, what do we call on it? The mental health and substance abuse, no, the San Juan Counseling twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty-three area plan. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I made the motion.
The motion made by Mr. Adams to approve local authority approval of area plan. Is there a second to the?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Maryboy?
Sweet.
Do you have a question?
I've got a couple, but go ahead and prove it. I'm fine with the plan.
Okay, no question?
I have some questions.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, also. Oppose, aye. If being done, motion carries? Go ahead.
Okay, Tammy or Aaron, one of you can answer this. The, um, so totally flying with the plan. The, um, so the Sharps, and I brought this up before in, in some other committees. So the Sharps is taking off of twenty nineteen. Is that a two-year plan? This sharp survey?
Well, I believe.
Or is it every year?
Two-year plan, I think for the public health or, or for one of the entities and then it's, I think at the county level, they give them three years.
Okay.
They're not in alignment with actually the time line that, um, individually they have to do.
Yeah.
I, I think for public health, it's three years.
Okay, because you jumped from twenty nineteen and then up to twenty twenty-five in our Sharps goal. And so, but I know that because of COVID, we're stuck with the twenty nineteen being real, a real survey.
Why they went off of that, I think, um, because they thought that that, the twenty nineteen data was a more accurate reflection of what was actually going on in the county.
Okay. Then also, I appreciate the fact that you've reduced some of the county match requirements in here. That was awesome. And so I did recognize the fact that there was less of a budget requirement for us, but one of, one of the questions that we've found, and I don't know the solution for this. Um, so, and it mentioned it in here that we have the county sheriff transporting, um, your clients. But there's no payment for the county sheriff to do that from San Juan Counseling. But yet you receive money from the state for that. And so, okay, it was just mentioned in your budget as one of the items of that that maybe they don't from that. So how? Because right now, so what's, what's happening with our officers is they're working a full shift and then all of a sudden we'll get a transport call. And as it's mentioned in here, we don't have a receiving center here. So we have to transfer either to Richfield or to Provo, Price? Provo. So we're transferring people to there, yet the sheriffs are getting overtime for it and they're getting to where they're tapping out and the county's general fund has to pay for that. So can we use that travel and that transport costs for part of the county's match or can we expect you guys to fund, reimburse that back to the general fund where you are a special service district or local authority district for?
County match, but I do know that we have worked with the law enforcement, um, department to try and, um, either have someone stay there or try and avoid any, um, I guess, acute hospitalizations on off hours and make it so that they have someone that is actually on shift and
Can transport there.
That can transport there. And we've offered, um, we've run into the issue specifically too with, um, transporting females up there.
Mm-hmm, they have to take two, yeah, two females go with them.
We work with them in the hospital to try and do an observation and assessment and hold them till about seven AM and we're working with Provo Canyon
Okay.
Primarily admit to. Um, and if things come down to it and, and we absolutely can't have family members or anyone stay there to, to ensure safety, um, we will send one of our AMCOT workers up there as well so that they can provide the transportation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and as far as, um, taking some of that county match and paying back to you.
Yeah. It's like the county general fund is doing it and there's no, there's no correlation with the county's match requirement. the county's match requirement as far as the Medicaid match. But yet I'm wondering, can you actually bill for that transportation cost through Medicaid or Medicare?
No, we, we can't. And, and the reason why it's, it's with uh, law enforcement is because they're under that temporary hold. It, it, it's not like we can just put them in a car and send them on their way.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a life safety or suicide prevention type thing. Yeah. And that was, we just couldn't figure out, well, the sheriffs are required to do it. Why aren't they getting paid? Why isn't there an offset budgetary wise to reimburse the sheriff for doing that? And it's the same with the hospitals.
Sheriff is, is that um, some of our other local mental health uh, authorities have run into where they've stayed in the hospital for one to two weeks where they're actually costing more in the backend.
Oh, wow.
Having to call law enforcement in to kind of manage things that hospital stuff can't do. And so again, we've, you know.
Okay.
Collaborated with them in a way. It's appropriate to measure it in some.
Okay.
Um, when there's a bid opening, um, other entities in the state are under the same kind of um, hiring crisis or, or retention crisis. And so if there's a bid, sometimes we have to jump on it, even if um, we worked diligently to kind of wait till, you know, the next day they're on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's kind of use it or lose it, so.
Yeah, okay. So do you think, Tammy, on that, can the county use, I mean, that's for us, just for an example, we spent a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars last year in overtime pay alone. And it's how do we reduce our overtime costs? Well, this transport of mental health patients is one of it. That's one of the, the factors that's causing some of this overtime. Um, and so do you think we can use some of those costs as the county match in some of those programs? Or we can say, hey, we've transported, say, twenty patients last year up to Richfield or across to Richfield or to Provo and minus those costs on the match programs?
I can look into it.
Okay.
But my guess would be no. I don't think in kind is allowed. But um, I, I'll look into it and I'll, I'll let you know. I think, you know, this is a, this is a moral issue that, that we have to deal with being so far away from the Wasatch front. It's, it's a bigger issue for us. Um, when we do have to hospitalized people and send them that far, it is, it is a timely process. So, but, but I can look into it.
Okay, awesome.
I'll see what I can find out.
Okay. Awesome. But thank you for the report. Do you know, I do, I do read these. And so it's pretty cool.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye also. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, three in favor, zero opposed.
Good job, Aaron.
We, we still have three more items. Four is the commission reports before we're done.
Okay. Good to see you, Tammy.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay, good. Go, go.
Stay here.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
We're gonna order popsicles.
Back to number ten.
All right, number ten, these will, these will be fast, like I had mentioned. So number ten is consideration approval of memorandum of understanding with the Utah Division of Water Rights for a Utah stream gauge to collect and publish flow data on Pat Creek above Spanish Valley. Well, they've installed this right at the bridge. And this is a partnership with us, Division of Drinking Water and Grand County, as well as I think Moab as well on here for the monitoring system. It costs us
Come up with three grand?
Three thousand two hundred and eight. I've got in our special projects account, three thousand dollars that we typically save there for engineering costs or things like that. Where this is professional and technical, I felt that it still fit, felt that. So we'll be at two hundred and eight dollars shy in the special projects line item. But we, I think we can make up for that two hundred and eight dollars.
You want a motion on this?
I know.
I make a motion that we uh, approve the memorandum of understanding with the Utah Division of Water Resources for a stream gauge in Pat Creek.
Motion by Mr. Adams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Question? If being done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. How do you vote? Get it?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? None, three in favor, zero opposed.
Right there.
Motion carries. Next.
Okay. Thanks, Megan, for keeping track on the agenda. So the next one is consideration approval of the transfer of FAA entitlements to Hanksville, Utah Airport. This will transfer our one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of entitlement to Hanksville. Where we're, where we're under contract and still completing the, the airstrip and the runway out there. Uh, this entitlement money, one hundred and fifty thousand just sits there. And so we would rather transfer that out to another city or county that can use it at their airport. And then when we have a large project, we can request entitlement from someone else. It's a give and take all throughout the state. We did this last two years ago for Spanish Valley. Um, or not Spanish Valley, Spanish Forks Airport. Yeah. And they were able to complete their project with it. So if you're not using it, don't set on it, is essentially what they ask for.
Or not even hedge.
Yep. So don't keep the money there.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to transfer our FAA money to the Hanksville Airport as requested.
Need a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. With that, uh, mo- uh, vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I also oppose, nay? Three in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, item number twelve, consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding between San Juan County and the state of Utah Navajo Nation, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority and the City of Blanding for the Westwater Project. I'm gonna actually ask you to table this item. The um, my understanding is the cost estimates for the well at the city of Blanding have come back a little bit higher than the funds that we have available for the project. So the Division of Drinking Water, I spoke to them yesterday and they're like, well, let's table it until we know exactly what everybody's gonna be participating with on here in the agreement. In the agreement itself, it just has San Juan County. Um, we're obviously a pass through for the funds on the engineering side of it, as well as we would be waiving any of the permitting fees um, for this project. Um, other than that, that's kind of all San Juan County is, but we just, let's table that until we know exactly what everybody's doing.
Motion to table.
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Hereby, the item is tabled, three in favor, zero opposed. The report?
Motion reports.
I have no report.
No report either.
Uh, the only thing that's coming up is major is the uh, twenty-sixth. Uh, there's gonna be a tour again of the proposal between Navajo Mountain and Ojito, Ada Tapia at the Visitor Center. And saddle, saddle up and ride out there into the west.
And saddle up your four wheeler?
Whatever you have.
So the twenty-sixth of May?
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Twenty-sixth is AOG, twenty-seventh is the, is the Navajo Utah Water Settlement.
That's, that'll be the following day.
Yeah.
So we have a crowd coming up and coming together on that day, I believe. At least one of them.
That start at eleven or when does it start?
Ten.
Starts at ten?
I have it at ten.
So we need to go down there.
President Nez, Lieutenant Governor, Governor, I think you're there.
Lieutenant Governor to Governor, President Nez. Commission. Not commission. Congressman Curtis.
Okay.
At the, on that same day, uh, Mr. Lee, Senator Lee's gonna be having his gathering over in Anis. So he might fly down there.
Yeah, for Rika. For the Rika.
Yeah.
Yeah, that extension.
Okay, that's extended my report.
Colleen's.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Adams to turn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. We are standing.